Name's gone already, so. Okay Jay, can you hear me? Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, it was giving me a direction having to do a summary for data audit, this wasn't sure.
All right, six, so I'll call me to order. The first order of business is to accelerate amendment. Meaning that from February 12. Um, the only thing. From January 12 was that. I talked to Jay apparently about changing something, I thought I. Don't know if you mean, but on the. At the line two eighty three. Um, when Chairman Jim Daniels pulled the board, see if. Thought the Gondola system needed site plan review would be required. When the Board of Directors wanted it in the affirmative, I wanted that in the minutes, so. If someone could make a motion to. amend those, I would appreciate it.
I'll make that motion, but just to be clear.
You must repeat it, so can I write it down?
I will. I, I'll, I'll, I'll. I intend to make a motion, but just to be clear, I believe you took a poll of the board as opposed to official vote.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I said.
I just wanna, I just wanna make it clear.
Yeah, he took a poll.
Make a motion that we add in the February. Twelve minutes. That, um. Following the discussion on the River Rock Gondola. That the Chairman took a poll of the planning board. On their thoughts and, uh, the board unanimously with.
Agreed.
Agreed that, that it needed site plan review.
Yeah, that's what I said. But thank you, so a motion we second, second, all's a favor, I, any opposed? You all sit there, Carol and Alan.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I'm just, I'm sure.
Next on the agenda. Is March twelfth. Minutes. And I stumbled on one bit from there. Um, online, well, four words of Mark argued. I like to take the word argued out of there, they're not the language stuff. Really. You said Marcus, discussed for this.
Stated.
Stated, yeah, something. Uh, underneath. Let's see, online. One twelve again, arguing. Make a change, Heather. Uh, let's see. Like I said, both parking and business units were pre-existing and not performing. Stating, say stating again that also I plan to review which figure. It was agreed that, uh, line one fifteen. Read that baseline parking count including total available spaces and seating. Capacity. Requirement.
So could you put, um, available. Spaces and required seating capacity?
Yes, yes, and required capacity should be established. On line eighteen. I mean, I want line one twenty seven.
Just going back to that, he was. Uh. Baselining the total available spaces. In the current seating capacity, not, not the, um.
Available spaces.
Yeah.
And required.
Well, current.
Current seating capacity.
I think, and the other one was right. And require square footage, because the, the, the square footage comes in that calculation too, right?
Um, yes, or the retail spaces, the, not the commercial space.
Must be what I. So. On line one twenty seven.
Uh, so we're making any, we're making no changes to that, correct?
Uh, what I said was required square footage.
Well, then where, where is that, what line?
Including total available spaces and seating capacity and required square footage should be on line one fifteen.
What is the baseline required square footage, what does that mean?
Okay, so for retail space, um, for public space with three hundred square feet requires one parking space. So it is.
And it is, it's not like just the square footage, it's the square footage plus the non. There's usable square footage and stuff that's like storages and stuff like that, public and non-public, public and non-public, right?
Alright, but this sentence in the discussion is talking about. Getting a baseline of what's there, what's there is existing parking and existing seating.
And existing space. Because restaurants have the seating, non-restaurants have the seating.
The space, regardless of what's in there, the space. Is the space, it's the existing spaces, X number of square feet regardless of what's in there.
Oh.
The existing square footage of that building is not gonna change.
It does, because you, you're only required.
We're getting, if we count the, 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 the parking spaces, okay? If there's sixteen parking spaces and it requires a hundred. There's still sixteen parking spaces. We're, we're getting a baseline of what's there. And we're asking now to, to, the next sentence down said, then if he's, if he's required to update his park, in other words, if there's insufficient amount. That's taking, uh, into consideration that next.
Right, what?
Sentence.
For what Carol's saying, and she.
I know what you're saying, I mean, she's right. But that's not the baseline of what we were asking for. It was agreed that a baseline parking clock count including total available spaces. And seating capacity.
But, correct.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that it, it, not only, uh, is based on the seating capacity, but it's based on the square footage.
What is based on, what's square footage?
The amount of parking that's required. So you're not gonna be able to tell how much. How much parking is required unless you have the square footage. Isn't that right, Carol, the way, the way we broke it down into that, the same way we broke it down into when we did the. Um, L. Charles, because I gave that, I sent that.
Okay, so what you.
So it was, it was seating.
Right.
And then it was square footage, usable square footage.
Existing square footage.
Existing square footage.
Not required square footage. That's the.
What are the two different terms, Carol, for that square footage, one, it was a.
No, it's a existing square footage.
What's that?
It's existing square footage, so existing retail or non-restaurant square footage. And then. So that's how you calculate the parking spaces for that kind of use.
In, in that square footage requirement.
Right.
There's two different categories, there is usable.
And non-public.
Public and non-public, so non-public are things like storage.
Right, and there's no parking requirement associated with non-public places.
But there is parking required for the public, and that's why they need to have those spaces identified. That's what I'm trying to get into here.
Okay, propose wording that does that.
It was agreed that baseline parking count including total available spaces and seating capacity.
Current seating capacity.
Current seating capacity. Yeah. As well as. Public square footage.
Existing.
Existing public square footage. Should be established. You alright with that?
Yeah.
This is the public square. Alright, then on line one twenty seven. Um. Where it says Paul should be Paul Bartlett, because of Paul Hallblum, so. Paul Bartlett, the same on line one thirty. I think that was all I had. Anybody else have anything, Mark Paul?
Yeah, it's probably go back to line one oh four.
Alright.
Um. Mark stated that Alpine Pizza is ancillary business under the existing special permit, Alpine Adventures. Is it a special permit or is it a land use permit?
Well, it's, uh. It's an ancillary business to the tourist attraction known as Alpine Adventure.
Right, but there's no special permit, is it?
No, it was just a determination, um, I can't remember, was it a ZBA determination or was it a plane or determination?
No, wait a minute.
That Alpine Adventures was a tourist attraction.
Well, well, what, I think what O.G. is saying is, you read this. Mark stated that Alpine Pizza is an ancillary business under the existing. Special permit, so instead of special permit, should say under the existing land use permit that they have to operate it as a. Uh, tourist attraction, so it, it, it was. It was authorized to be operated as a tourist attraction under a land use permit. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, okay.
I was referring to the.
So, they do it special there for claims permanent. Yeah, y'all?
Yeah, I got two other things, but the, on my computer, the. The line numbering is totally off when it's here.
Well, yeah. What do you think, guys, about this one?
That's the same as mine, little printed one, um. Intractions of the height. Variance, requesting a variance.
Okay, so I had that too, so it was around two thirty three and two thirty four. Well, I had that type restriction discussion and took that.
Okay, two thirty four, right. Yeah.
I had that too, but I didn't.
Okay, two thirty three, two thirty four, two thirty four, the discussion focused on the height. Variance application.
And setback, sorry. Well, I wrote, I wrote, I had a description and setback, right, because we were talking about setback, making sure they meant setback, then you. And square footage count, but it needed some.
I thought they said that it won't need a variance for that, because they weren't gonna.
Right, then they're not gonna need.
They're not gonna need the variance setback, because they're not gonna build them setback.
True.
Um, so the discussion focused on the height variance application.
Yeah, you know what?
And then.
Well, Jay, was it in here, where, where you brought up the fact of the, um. How they were going to by dress, having the parking, that was on both blocks, they were gonna have a easement, was that in the minutes, you know? I remember you said the only way to do that would be to put it in some sort of a. Easy.
Yeah, they would have to do that as part of the, um.
I guess they could, yeah.
Part of the application, I don't know.
I didn't know if it made sense, so I was saying.
I didn't see anything in here.
No, I didn't either.
And really, the thing is on line two sixty. Um, the study for the traffic turnaround on P.A. Road. Forest Ridge Drive. And group one twelve.
He actually.
It should be Pollard Road. That should be Pollard Road, yeah.
And I don't know what turnaround means, it's a study for the traffic on those roads. Not just the, not just the turnaround traffic, but the turning traffic, it's.
Turning lane, isn't it, or?
So let's draw the.
Study is for all of the traffic, those going straight, those going left and those going right.
Right.
And I guess if anyone turns around, they'd count that, but that's.
So let's cross off the word turnaround.
And, and take P.A. and turn it into.
And turn it into Pollard. Okay, it might be on, thanks, on Pollard.
Yep.
Any more?
No. I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, Mark's twelve minutes as amended.
The motion said all the favors, I may oppose. Thank you. Close down. Okay, so. Moving along. Voluntary lot merger, I don't like in, for a sucker, request plan board approval for a voluntary lot merger of two blocks. And then they, I can end up, build car. Uh, located in a small business district, one of the lot and land block. Of the fourth slide, I filled out their form, um, they had your second public hearing the other night, there were no. No, concerns raised, so at this point, I would entertain motion to. Uh, approve the voluntary lot merger. So move, so move by Joe. Second by Mike, all of the favors, if I'm saying aye, aye, the opposed?
I'm signing, it's probably, hey. Here we are.
In the air.
Yet.
Alright, next on the agenda. Especially with North Country Council, regional plan improvement, study for best. Turning off onto Pollard Road and onto Forest Ridge Drive. From onto New Hampshire one twelve, Main Street, Gangnam Side Way. So, um, per request by, I don't think it's the GOP, but they did request that. Nick, on the zooming?
Yes, sir, Nick Altonaga, North Country Council Senior Planner, uh, happy to be here, to call your acquaintance. Um, I know, and in my course, one of the Carol in. Coming in here, I think, I had gotten a request for, I think it was four. Locations, traffic counts around. Diner. That's under construction, um, and as I had, had let Carol know, those should be no problem, the one on Pollard Road, uh, one, I think is. In this direction of Pollard Road, one towards Loon, and then one on Ford Bridge Drive, I believe. Um. Those should all be good, and I actually, in going over our files, we actually found that we did similar accounts back in twenty seventeen. Um, so I could try and kind of mirror that data, how we presented it and everything, we had to graph some charts, um. So it'd be good that, uh. We can kind of compare historical to current, and then, of course, uh.
So you already have counts from twenty seventeen, from the Forest Ridge, from?
Not all, and I think we, we definitely have Pollard, and we definitely have a couple of locations along, um, one twelve.
So we would have to get the rest of those in order to get some sort of baseline?
Yeah, but, like I said, like, and, and I told Carol this, and that'll, there's no cost at all, we, we can add the cap locations you requested just onto our regular list. Um, and get those done just as part of our regular state mandated counts.
Okay.
So what we were also looking forward with, see whether or not, for establishing a baseline, we also wanted to see if we could. Do it during the high season, like Carol recommended, I think. Uh, what holiday?
Columbus.
Columbus Day. And when, when Columbus Day, that way there, we could have both, you know, something of, of very valuable.
Yeah, let's see what it is. That's no problem at all, we can set these up, I think. Carol had mentioned, pretty soon, April or May, I think is when she first said, so. You know, that'll, we're gonna be getting out there in the next few weeks to start up our program, because it's snow, you know, hopefully we'll stay off the ground.
Yeah.
Um, but then we can always just reset, same exact locations, um, we popped over, so it'd be no problem, alright?
So, so. Now, when are we gonna get?
Yeah, we can do it, and it most likely be late April, early May.
And those will, that's what you already have.
Yeah, and we do, you know, it's not.
Right, I guess that, I'm, I'm just. Um. Doing it that way, April is gonna be, what, what I would consider the absolute. Columbus Day is the absolute hot. And doing a traffic study.
Me, here, um. Thank. Sorry, now, because it's picking up whatever's happening there, thank you.
If, if we do that, is that the most helpful data to do a traffic plan? Two extremes versus say, you know, do it for a week in July when. It's Columbus Day, but it's not dead April.
That, I mean, I think, it depends on what you're looking for, because I know there are such crazy swings, and, you know, I live in North Woodstock, and so. You know, Columbus Day, we're gonna like, I don't leave my apartment, because it's so crazy, and then, and you know, a few weeks later, we dead, until the snow hits, so, um. You know, we could do it, and I was just thinking that maybe, wanna do it after, what is it, Memorial Day? Maybe when, you know, summer starts that, but, um. You know, I think April and May might just be, you know, it'd be kind of local traffic, or it'd be more, you know, off-season, I suppose, but it really is up to you, because we're happy to. Settle up once, twice, if you need free time, we can do that, um. It's like, you know, you're not up in Pittsburgh.
You can, you can talk.
I think it would be something.
And it'll be you either.
Um, John is on.
What do you want?
Have the, the letter, copy the letter, because I mailed, mailed that letter.
I'll trans.
I haven't.
We're gonna have to mute you, if you don't. Would you come, Carol, please?
Yeah, right there.
Carol?
Okay.
There you go.
Good.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, okay. So, it, it sounds like, but if, if we, we're not getting charged for it, and you don't mind doing three, and I think O.G. probably has a good point, that we could do one in a very low point, we could do one in.
July.
July, and we could do one on Columbus Day, and that will get us. July's pretty heavy, but Columbus Day is even more.
July is, is average busy, July, August, weekends in the winter, and it's like.
That's fine, I can do that.
And I think also we need to judge, like, I mean, um.
Well, I think.
Used in determining a traffic plan. We're never gonna fix Columbus Day.
No, but you're also.
And April doesn't need that.
A lot of the local people will wanna know what the difference is during a time when there's no, love, love to.
Well, yeah, because I, I did a good that, April and May is kind of like I said, like local traffic or regular.
Yes.
Kind of.
Absolutely.
Why would you give it two months to work, but April, May? June and July? And then Columbus Day, when is that?
October.
Usually around October thirteenth.
So you can do it, September, late September and October. If you could do Columbus Day, that would be better, but we'll give you. That'll give you some time.
Yeah, it gives us, gives us a window, because sometimes we just.
And then you can just get back to us, what point you think you can get to, and.
Yep. I can do that, I can put that, I'll, uh. Yeah, no, it depends, you know, equipment, things like that, we'll try, and I'll try and line it up, so that we use the same exact counters, so there's no. Variables, things like that, exactly the same stuff, same locations, you know.
That would be good.
Same data. Uh. And I know Carol had also mentioned, there was a discussion about. I think that traffic analysis. That there were some questions about. Great.
Well, I think you had a specific request from New Hampshire D.O.G. For the turning, um, the turning traffic study.
But the planning board voted that then.
Well, I think he was, they still want, they just, they didn't. They just didn't, um, withhold any kind of permit, you know, driveway permits for. For the applicant, um.
Well, if the state wants to do a, if the D.O.T. wants to do a traffic analysis, they can do that. They, they have the ability to do it too, right?
Well.
Well, I mean, if we do it, if, if we have North Country Council do it, and the state, state D.O.T. says, oh, we don't agree with that, then, then you're back to square one, so why not just ask them to do their own, then act that way there? There's no question about whether it's, that they like what they give it off.
We can pay it one to the other.
Right, yeah. Like, let's say, if the state wants to do one, they can do one.
Okay, so if I write something, I want you to sign it.
That's fine.
I'm not sure what the exact wording of that was.
Well, we have the email.
But I, I, I. Will express my opinion again, that, that doing a traffic study based on, um, projections of what. Might be occurring when the hotel is built, what might be occurring when the, when the common man is, is open, um. Is, is just someone's projection using, you know, made up numbers that may or may not be accurate. If we wait till those entities are built and people are driving in and out of them. We can then take the second traffic count. Say, three years or whatever. And, and then, then we have the data that the traffic analysis could be done, and we can argue in three years about whether the state does it or we do it, but we're not inside right now.
Well, no, but I also think that when, for example, South Beach was. Top Mount was being constructed, being considered for implementation, that. They, Colonel and all those guys did traffic studies well before. Uh, it was built. Now, whether those are relevant, or whether they were accurate. You're right, who, who else would be doing that, you know, whether those were even accurate as to what they submitted. But they did them that way, so that you could see if there was, what type of impact they, they maybe had, or could have. You know, based on the number of rooms in the hotel, based on a restaurant with so many seats in it, based on, you know, the. The, uh, the leftover, uh, to be built at Forest Ridge. You know, the, the, the leftover to be built at Forest Ridge. There's still a lot of property up there to be built, so I mean, all those, those assumptions, you're right, you're making assumption, we all know what that is, but. Assumption to you, assumptions are used a lot during traffic, aren't they? I mean, when you, when you're looking at a big development, that's not gonna be there and be built for. Who knows how long, you have to assume that here's the lots, here's the houses, here's the.
It's projections, not the hard data that we call it.
Right. I mean, I think all we're looking for is to see if. The projections would create any real problems. And I, I mean, I don't, I don't think you wanna wait till they're there and figure out that you got a problem, either. So I, I think that, you know, projections are good in order to, to take a look. At what possibly could it, could happen, so. Go ahead, Carol.
Um, I did find the email from September eighteenth. From Harrison Gates, from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Says, New Hampshire DOT recommends a left and right turn lane warrant analysis for Pollard Road. For the proposed restaurant to be done by the town, or have the applicant for the restaurant drive to Pollard Road, conduct. This analysis, Pollard Road is a connection to Manhattan one twelve, as such, the town is responsible. For any modifications to traffic control needed. That's what it said.
So, just to clarify, this, I believe, is in addition to, so there's our traffic house, we'll set up, that is set. And then there's another level of the traffic support analysis. To which, just very quickly, I checked with, we have an on-call engineer, just to, if towns need help, they can kind of contact us, and we can have work done for them. They said that they can conduct the warrant analysis for the left and right turn lane. And that would most likely be one hundred percent covered. By the budget that we have that can cover their work. If that works for.
So, so you're saying there would be no cost to the town?
No. It would be, if, if you were to have it done yourselves, it would be, I believe they estimated probably seven or eight thousand dollars. If that was done, if directed by the town and paid for it.
Try that again, so if.
It'll.
On one hand, I'm hearing that you're telling me that, that you have a budget that's uncovered, but then on the other hand.
So being done on your own. Like, if you were to do it yourself.
Oh, okay.
It would be around seven or eight thousand, but you'd be able to access our on-call services, so there would be.
Back to the council, we get that. Study done.
Yeah.
Covered within your existing budget.
Yeah.
Then I don't think that, probably no problem, too.
Okay, so we can, I, I'll work, I can work with Carol, um, there's just a quick little forum to kind of make it official of asking for that assistance, other than that.
How long does it, so, why would you think that, between the traffic studies, the traffic counts, and the study, uh, would be complete?
I think, you know, dude, we can, I would suggest, we probably put out that first set of counts for April, May. And then, you know, once that data is just looked at, we can then provide it to the engineer, to then give them more data to work with, because there's. There's a state cap location, a little bit. Whether east of Forest Ridge, that's set up every three years. So it's a little out of date right now, but. That's kind of the one data point they can work on, if they can use these local, local counts that we're gonna set up, that would be even better.
So that study is, is based on assumptions as well, right?
It's, 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 it's a bit of, it's a bit of looking at the current development, and then projecting, you know, what the growth might be, and looking at. You know, the, the diner development, and then the other things in the vicinity.
And what's currently coming off of the Route one twelve, making that turn, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I would suggest probably that would be able to get done by. Middle of the summer, by July, most likely. So.
Do we need?
Be able to do that analysis before you even did the July count or the Columbus Day count?
Yeah, because I, I would probably, you know, we would conduct the, you know, April or May set. I'd be able to package that, give it to the engineer, so then they have it for their work.
Don't say we can't really agree. Yeah, but will you, will you, any more benefit to having a labor day weekend, busy, you know, every weekend?
Well, I think, I, I, I think if we do a high, and a low, and a middle, that, that we're getting, we're getting three studies, that probably would be able to give us. What do you think, Nick?
I think, I, I think it's fair, because I, it's, it's, it's a fair concern, because Columbus Day is such an outlier, but I think it's. It's also really good to know exactly what the town is working with, because it is. It's something that not a lot of other towns have to worry about. And, and live with it.
We can't build a church for every Easter Sunday, so I mean, it's the same type of question, so.
Yeah.
But, do we, Carol, do we need a, you want a motion to make this go forward?
Yeah.
Oh. The motion is that we use North Country Council to do the traffic counts. Up on. Turning off and on to Pollard Road, off and on to Forest Ridge Drive. Uh, from the entry Route one twelve, and Route one twelve Main Street, and Kang Long's Highway. And then to do this study, uh, per request by the New Hampshire DOT. That's the motion.
Do you want to just say turn lane analysis?
A left and right turn lane warrant analysis for Pollard Road.
Okay, so I'll say that, as, as a motion. Motion to do.
You're gonna second that?
I'll second that, yeah. Okay, all's in favor?
I.
I. The opposed, the essentials? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. We go. We're gonna be talking about the. Master plan. North County Children Works and Master Plans for Towns?
Yes, we do.
We'll be talking about that.
You want me to stick around, or is it just sometime later?
Uh, it, it's later on the agenda.
I could stick around if you'd like.
Okay, well, yeah, let's, let's do that. And then we're gonna get you, we're gonna get through some others. I was keeping my answer, well, uh, some other things will bring that around, alright? Okay. Next. I'm trying to figure out where it is. Is combined site plan review matters for. Box trailers and personal storage units, or. SBR twenty twenty-five oh four, M one oh seven, Carol?
Well, those are, those are just, um, our file numbers, uh, but it has to do with Joe Shenard and his box trailers, and stuff for a box trail.
Okay.
And it's, um, he's asking for one, four lots.
What are the lots?
Okay, the, the first.
Lot zero forty-four, lot zero fifty, lot zero fifty-one, and lot, um, zero fifty-two.
Correct.
Um, application for site plan review. Approval continuing locating applicants for existing storage box trailers, personal storage on four separate lots. And you went through three, it's like they've been located and used for past several years. Similar to the numerous residents, and will be submitted by the planning board. Okay, um, the applicants, Joe Shaw, do you want to step down?
Yeah.
OJ? I think, I, I'd like to request you to step down on this, on because of the. The lawsuit with Joe.
I think. I will, I would need the, um, the settlement agreement that we signed with Joe.
Alright.
Which, we could reference that very specifically. In order to resolve the issues of the semi-trailers, Shenard shall make application to the Town of Lincoln Planning Board and Board Zoning Board within sixty days of the effective date of the screening. The planning board slash zoning board's lawful decisions related to the semi-trailers shall be. Unanimated on both parties, their heirs and sides. Unappealable by any party by any means or mechanism whatsoever. And final. The participation of a select board representative, or either board, shall not be considered a conflict. However, in no instant shall Tam or Ham participate in said board hearings involving Shenard. In the event the town lawfully requires the removal of the semi-trailers, and Shenard refuses to do so, the town shall have the right to pause. Their removal at reasonable cost to Shenard. Reasonable cost shall be determined by the town, changing three bids for the removal if required. So, he's already agreed that I can be on this, at this hearing as voting member, um, there, and it's not considered a conflict of interest.
You're agreeing to that, Joe?
I didn't agree to my line of ideas.
One of the eligible members, Phil.
That's irrelevant, Paul.
OJ, I'm not asking you, alright, I'm, I'm not asking, I'm just asking what the, OJ? I'm asking what the other members think.
This topic is, is not for the RSA Hall.
You can ask your opinion, or we'll tell you.
I, I'm at. Please, ask him your opinion.
Well, I didn't know about this, though, if there's a contract that's already said and done. Then I, I guess, I, I can't see why not, I can't say not, I can't.
Steve?
How come you can say it and we can't?
It's what we all agreed to, sitting, his, his law. He didn't want Tammy, and Tammy was fine with that, so, it was a, it was a two-second discussion, we don't want her, she doesn't want it, we put it in the debate. That's why.
You all gave them?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll proceed. Um, Joe?
Okay.
You asked for.
I get some questions from the town.
Hang on a minute, you asked for a, a waiver, you're asking for a waiver. Of the application, I, I just want to clarify what you asked for here.
I asked for both, actually, but waiver, if I can get it.
You asked for a waiver to, to not fill out the application for site plan review.
We filled out.
And. Oh, you did? Right, but, David, what's that for, a waiver for everything? And then you asked for a, you're also requesting a waiver from site plan review period, too, right, is that, is that my understanding?
I had to, I asked for a waiver, check plan review, not going to go to the regular site plan.
I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
So you're asking for a waiver, to not have to fill out. And, and, and not have to supply any of the requirements. Or, or requests in the site plan review checklist, right?
You'll be, they require, when they want, where they're getting their plan, the trailers on Williams, and they be able to, they move periodically, they will be moved periodically.
The only thing that I see provided, the only thing that I can see provided is the name and address of the owner and applicant, the rest.
They give you the maps, where they, when they locate it.
The rest is either not applicable or waiver requested.
Correct. And turn it goes down.
But you're also. One, I have, I need the application for waiver of site, of subdivision, site plan review regulation. So you're seeking, you're seeking, uh, site plan approval. So if you're seeking site plan approval, then you need. Go ahead, Carol.
I think he was asking in the alternative, like, he prefer to have the waiver. And that's what he's asking for, but in the alternative, he's asking for site plan approval to leave the box trailers there.
So, we need to know whether or not the application, which you submitted, is complete. And. I guess I'll ask Carol her thoughts on this.
Okay, so, um, so, after the consulting, um. I'm to say that it's appropriate for the planning board to make the decision about whether the application is complete. Because the planning board is authorized to law, by law, to make this decision under RSA six seventy-six, colon, four. Roman numeral one, small c, number.
So you don't want to weigh in on whether or not this application is. Okay. Alright, so, having said that. I will look at, I will ask the board. Uh, whether or not you believe, because, I mean, I can go down through the checklist. But there's only one thing that says provided, and the rest are not applicable and waiver requested. So I will ask the board, do you think that the application, uh, is complete? Uh, and we'll take comment on that. You said yes, you think it's complete? Okay. OJ?
I don't really put them, does it?
Well, the, and, I. In, in his way of looking at it, yes, it's, because every one of these items has been addressed, but. All of them have been addressed, with the exception of none requesting a waiver, and I think we need to go through and. Look at each waiver request and see if, if we accept that request or not. I mean, because, because he's requesting these waivers, but. I think by accepting it, we're saying, okay, we'll accept all of those waivers, and I think we need to, I think we need to.
One by one, that's what I'm asking.
I, I think we need to go through them one by one, so that, so that the applicant is pretty, it will understand which waivers we will accept and which ones we lost.
I'm okay with doing all that, all the board.
Chairman?
That's what they want to do.
The chairman?
Hang on.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Alright.
So, any questions for Carol? We'll proceed, Carol, I need, I do the site plan review, not site plan, but general use. District, I need trailers legal, we put on their property. Went to this one before.
You can't ask Carol if it's legal, because she's not an attorney, you can ask her if it's. If, if.
She made a requirement for the trailer illegal in general use.
Needs to require it, being in general, please ask.
A business use is acceptable in, um, that's when you were talking about, like, there were gonna be. Bulk storage units, that's when we were talking about that, and general use is permits, uh, business uses. And bulk storage units are a business use, I think it's under industrial. Um, so, the answer would be a bulk storage unit that would be allowed. But, I don't know that that translates into necessarily personal storage, I don't have the answer to that.
If I make a comment, you will look at any well-looked trailer, a lot of my tools and equipment right inside of it. That you combination of business, and storage mother while along with my tool.
Okay, well, we've decided that we're gonna go down through the application. Checklist, and we're gonna see whether or not these waiver requests are. Okay, or whether the board thinks that they, they need to. Scale not less than one inch, this board, waiver requested. What do you think? Does he need a plan?
Yeah, I think if you look at the. First four of these, all related to having or not having a plan.
Right.
So he's requesting that he, that we approve this without a plan. I, I guess, there's three trailers on one single lot right now, supposedly. Um, I don't know that they're on one lot, they encroached on the two lots. And I think the only way we can tell that, is not from my opinion, not from anyone else's opinion, but from someone. Measuring they're on one lot, if they're on two lots.
My contention is this, Paul. Hang on, the board's discussing whether or not these waiver requests are, are, Joe, so let's, let the board discuss that first. Steve, what do you think? Should we have a plan?
I've got plenty of pictures of that, some.
We have pictures, but we don't have anything that shows setback from property lines or anything like that. We have pictures that show that, that the three where they're located currently.
There's one, one down the middle.
On the lot, on the lot. Yeah.
Got a house, so we got five. Wait a minute, whoa, whoa.
Tell me if the, if those lines, which did not come from the survey, a hundred percent accurate.
They're all his lots, over.
They are. But, Mike, what do you think? Should he, should he have a plan that shows where they are in relationship to the lot lines? If they're, they're all his property, and if the trailer, it's, there's supposed to be what, five foot setback? From the property line, but if they're both his properties, does that make a difference, I'm asking? Well, I think there's some ways to look into some of that. The way I look at it is that, if, if these are, if these are registered. The way I look at it is that, if if these are, if these are registered and inspected trailers. Then they can be anywhere on property. If they're not registered and inspected trailers. They would be considered storage. And as a as storage, they would need to meet the setback requirement. Which is, I think the five feet, so it is, I think, yeah, five feet, so if I'm all, from all the way around. So, we would need a plan that shows. Where they are, and if they're not at at the five foot, you know, setback, then they would need, they would need to eat it. That, that's the way I'm looking at this thing, so, I don't know if anyone else looks at it, probably need. To see where they currently are, and 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 they're not, we don't have anything that shows that. And that's what we had asked originally when we started talking about this.
Alright, so we need to get a baseline of where we're at with some definitive numbers.
And we can, I mean, you know, this hearing doesn't have to be. Done tonight, I mean, we can send Joe back and say, hey, we need it, we need a more definitive plan, show us where the trailers are on that piece of property. Because you can't, you know, they.
Right, no, I.
Unless Joe hustle, are are the, my question would be, are they registered and are they?
Were registered, the last one, the town told me they wouldn't make any difference if they registered or not.
Well, I think it makes a difference.
Well, they were registered, I can have registered by tomorrow morning.
Registered and inspected, roadworthy, Joe.
You don't have to have inspected down the road, according to DOT, which I just came from. These do not have to be inspected, they have to be roadworthy, which they are. And they have to be registered, if you go on the road, if you don't go on the road, they don't require to be registered or inspected.
But if they're not going on.
Property, it's a different story altogether, slip lankers a few minutes ago.
If they're not, if they're not going on the road, so then they're considered, then they're gonna be considered storage trailers, okay? That's what I look at it.
Okay, they can get registered and made by all the trailer.
You know, once you do that, it's cheap fun. Should do that, it's cheap fun.
I mean, if they're.
They had registered till October last, in the last year.
We're just gonna go along, split and hit us from the adult.
I know.
Right, I mean, honestly, it's been backed up for sure, but I mean, we wanna make sure that. We have a butters that have concerns and. We need to make sure that we take care of their concerns as well.
Even nowadays, if I haven't been in court in the last ten years, but still, it's costing us thirty thousand dollars to buy.
No, there's not a reason to make anything happen, Joe.
I know, it isn't down to the ball.
So, okay, so the, the answer to the question is, we do need a plan. We're gonna need a plan, Joe, showing. Where those trailers are, on which lots and. How far away they are from. The uh property boundaries, does anyone disagree with that?
No. The closest one now is ten feet. We need, I can bring it in tomorrow morning.
We need, we need to have a plan to show that, okay? Alright, so we'll move down to the name and address, we have that. Name and address of the licensed land surveyor. Does anyone think he has to have a licensed land surveyor do this, or does it? I don't, I I don't know, Joe. Steve? Okay?
Does Joe know where the property boundaries are, they marked?
It's right out there, I can take him, show him to you. You know, if it moves time, it's like the one in front of my house, which is, you gotta get dug up. By the raw town, and he's putting the new rice ball rolling, he dug up my property boundaries.
I don't understand why it matters, the owner's ball.
It doesn't matter, because if he sells one, if he sells the next one, and. I mean, you just, yeah, you just need to have. I think that if Joe represents on a plan, if he draws it and he represents on the plan, that is gonna be ten feet. And it's bound later on not to be ten feet, then Joe has to, he submitted the plan showing that it was ten feet or whatever, and he'll have to comply with that. That's the way that I would look at it.
Question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you were saying before, if Joe gets them inspected and registered.
You don't have to have inspected, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, they need to be movable, mobile.
Right.
Now, if they're not able to be mobile or movable, then they're considered a structure.
That's what I, that's where I'm going with it.
So, if Joe just got them registered or worthy, whatever, to a point where they can be moved. Then he's also, he could move stuff if he needs to, and.
Bring the red straight within tomorrow.
Okay, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that.
That's me, that that's just me, you guys better agree.
No, no, I'm saying, so this way he knows. I know what to expect, he knows what to expect, so we're all on the same page, that's all.
So let's see, before we go any further, let's. Let's discuss that, I mean. Maybe no one else agrees, maybe I'll do that, then. I mean, I think they're, if they're movable. Then they can be on that property wherever they're gonna be, because they're movable, but if they're not movable, then I think they're storage. You, you seem to say, you said the same thing, Steve, what do you think? OJ, what do you think?
They need to be roadworthy. Okay, and that's in the RSA.
Yeah.
It does not have to be inspected, but they have to be roadworthy.
When you determine this roadworthiness.
Generally, you do that by bringing it to a certified inspection station and getting an inspection sticker.
That's why I said inspected, registered.
Right, but the RSA, this is the word roadworthy.
Oh, okay.
So, so it it's a small technicality, but is there someone that 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 he could hire to promote? That the town would trust to to determine them roadworthy? They're roadworthy, he can, can register, he could drive them to an inspection station, I mean.
It may not attract. It doesn't mean it.
You know, the 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 history of this is is is. You know, there's been discussions, as Joe said, back in twenty twelve, about moving these. Um, and they've been unable to be moved because of the condition they're in, the location they're in, and the refusal of the owner. When, when he came before this point, don't forget, just a few months ago, it was October September, and yet. Then we were talking about um storage units that lay flat on the ground. We were talking about, wait, wait, Joe, I'm done, not done talking. We were talking, that was the, the original talk was, you know, the place down in Cheltenham, he mentioned as, doing something like that.
Eyeball, yeah.
Which which are lost, sitting on the ground, and talking about putting them back where the fourth trailer is, which is. Nearly invisible from the road. Okay, and and doing a site plan with that. Now we hear today saying, you know, that that after twelve years of trying to get these tra, these. Junk trailers moved.
It's a matter of opinion, Joe, start please.
That we're, we're now gonna look at just letting them leave there despite um. The, you know, the original litigation said that they had to be moved. We agreed that if he can't get from the planning board, and I agree was, was thinking that the planning board was going to. Do what Joe suggested back in September of. Moving them down to where the fourth trailer is, you can't see them, you can screen them with fence, you can screen, skirt them with, with, with. Whatever, you can do landscaping around them, um, all of that. And then he comes forward with this, that just wants us to say, yeah, you can leave them there after a twelve year legal battle, to to get them out of here.
Well, it's not that twelve year legal battle, it wasn't just for those trailers, like. It was. Joe, go ahead.
Well, according to what I've picked up. OJ is co-agreeing to the agreement because the comments are inaccurate. Proport and illegal violating is inappropriate.
In what way?
Just talking to my lawyer, he's sending a text coming, he's looking in.
By the way, if you could speak a little closer to that microphone.
Okay.
That way there, it gets picked up.
I I can understand that, can you repeat that?
Could you, yeah, could you repeat that one more time, so we can get it for the record?
OJ is co-agreeing to the agreement, because the comments are inaccurate. Proport, proport, um. Properly, and illegal violating, appropriating. These comments, my lawyer said it with the, with the agreement.
If your attorney is on, is is on the web, on the.
Zoom.
Zoom, it would be good for him to, because it's hard for us to, it's hard for me to figure out what you're trying to say, does anyone else have?
Is she trying to?
If, is the attorney here, Joe?
He could maybe listen in on that. On the zoom, but also he's hooked in, tied into the.
Okay. Well. Without him being able to do that, we're really not gonna. That's much.
Can you move Joe, exactly, there was an agreement, like, a long time ago, that they would move.
That's what they were talking, what was it, I don't think it was an agreement, was it, OJ, you mean? You, they was discussed.
It was, it's always been a part of the, the discussion. And the original. Um. What do you call it, ver, not verdict, but the original. Finding, finding of the, of the judge, um. Judge implied that those were part of the junk to be removed. Okay? The board has always been trying to work with Joe. And we're in agreement with moving. E- either, you know, hopefully into storage, then the whole board is, by the way, is, is in a hundred percent agreement. He's select board of allowing him to. Put storage units over where the fourth trailer is, okay, again with. Guidance from this board as far as fencing, shielding, landscape, whatever, right? And input from, from the classes. But not leaving the three junk trailers where they are.
But the court has also put it in, this board chance to decide what they want inside, and it will be whatever we decide.
That is correct.
So if we decide they stay there.
They stay there.
They stay there. Well, we're still on the checklist, so we, we need a plan. We've said that, if, if they're gonna be left there, I I guess. The more relevant question is. For this board is. Are we leaning towards allowing Joe to leave them there? If we're leaning towards allowing Joe to leave them there. And we need to plan and other things to come along with it, if we're gonna ask Joe to move them, then. We probably, probably still would need a plan based on what, why he's gonna put them on, where they're gonna be, so we know that they're.
The plan of movement was down where the other one is alone.
But that other one, that other one is, if you take a look at that lot, what lot number is that?
Um, fifty one, fifty one, fifty two.
They would have it be, the one that's down there should be moved onto a single, they also be moved on to a lot, because they're gonna need set of storage. Right, whether or not. Pardon me?
It's, it's tied, it's stuck tied to a garage in town. Then with the, the tire down in Woody Island, the trailer.
That's right.
It's full of, why, the care equipment and tires tied to a business in town, garage.
The one that's on fifty one and fifty two?
Fifty two, yeah.
Okay. It it doesn't matter what it's tied to, it just matters, it would.
It's a no longer, that trailer is, is no less than fifty feet from main boundaries. Stuff like the hundred and two hundred.
It's, it's splitting the boundary line from what I see.
Yeah.
Be twenty fifteen two and fifty one, right?
Right. So we would still need, the way I look at it, we we. Would still need to plan, does anyone disagree with that, whether it's where it is now, or whether they go down on fifty one or. Before, so there would be four there.
So, I just need to eliminate a lot of nonsense, if you just move them down there.
If you, i- if you move them down there. I would think that the. That would help the abbot to write a letter, because it wouldn't be right directly across from the abbot. What do you think, Mike?
I went by the area today, looked, and that other trailer is pretty secure, like, can't see a lot of, it's obscure, yeah?
Yeah.
I mean. Clearing up a lot of BS, I guess, that's the only other way to say it, is to move them and put them in that back lot. Is that gonna be a hot break there, Joe?
I intend, originally, there were three trailers there before.
Yeah.
Which I, town could be get rid of, but I did, and they had these three on after the pack. And to keep expanding, no matter what I do, to keep closing, it has to do with the two houses on the whole lot. We're gonna find out how there's another. They keep adding more and more to it, the amount of damage trying to get into, especially into their wings. The original three trailers have been dismantled and hauled away. They were cut up and hauled away at great expense. The chassis, the wheels were hauled to the junkyard, and like a set, the side, all the rest of the trail is cut to pieces and hauled to landfill and. And ba, uh, fencing.
So, Jay, let me ask you a question. If Joe puts all four of these trailers on fifty. There's a town on fifty. There's a town that have objections to him using them for storage there, and they get. It, once this is over, is it over if he put those on there, as far as the town's concerned? Is that my understanding? I I'm trying to give an understanding a little bit better.
Yes, the select board. Trying to work with Joe is in agreement that if they, if moves them, if the planning board agrees. That putting them on lot fifty one or fifty one and fifty two. Um. Is approved by this board, that we're in agreement with that, along with that, you know, if the board wants to. Um, you know, put on conditions regarding landscaping or fencing or skirting or, or whatever. Prefer to be in, in, in storage containers that's sort of the ground. Okay, then, then stuff can't accumulate under them.
We can make that a condition.
In their lower.
We can make that a condition.
Right, and again, if these are truly. Uh, roadworthy. This, this is a, a, a three hour project, okay? It was, it was twenty twelve, when I had my personal first discussion with Joe about these trailers, it was a problem back then. Um, and it was a different story about where they came from and all of this stuff, but but it was, it was. It, it, it was talked about that, that those aren't. An appropriate use of that property. You know, being. Non-roadworthy junk storage.
So he would have to, it's, well. I guess that's, if, if Joe, if you can move them from where they are now, no problem, to lot fifty one. That means they're roadworthy, and then the setback requirements go away.
With setback, they don't need to close the fifty feet, it's payment anyway, forty minutes.
Yeah, I'm worried, let's think, that's what I'm, I'm just saying, as far as we're concerned, if they're roadworthy, then you bring them from where they are right now. To lot fifty one. Then, then that takes, that, that would take care of the issue. The way I see it, does anyone else?
It, when you say lot fifty one, is that the one with the other trailers? So, all four trailers are gonna be right now, that all four trailers will be on one piece.
One piece.
Out of the way.
Right. Joe, would you agree, would you also further agree to making sure that stuff is only stored in them and not out of them? That way there, that way there, we could put the fears and calm of, of. Of butters about things that might be stored underneath or around it, and that way there, we wouldn't have to require any screening. If you just agreed to make sure that anything that was stored, stored inside them.
You can't always store like lawnmower with a dry mold outside, if you, if you be undercover on a trailer.
Well, you have other places you can store stuff, but I mean, you know, as far as these four trailers are.
I get a question.
Yes, sir.
If you do that to me, are you gonna go around to everybody in town that's packed trailers, and then put skirting and stuff around it?
I'm gonna tell you. I'm gonna tell you the same thing I told Mark to go to, you know, it's like, we're not here to talk about anybody else, we're here to talk about you, we'll be. We're here to talk about you, I'm asking you, in, in the interest of moving on from ten plus years of litigation. If moving, if you could move those three trailers and the other one onto lot fifty one. And if you would agree to only store stuff inside of them, I think we can move on from this one, I just. I don't know, I, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but that's not the way I see it. Mike, what do you think?
I agree with that, absolutely.
Steve?
Yeah, you go away, yeah, yeah.
OJ, you okay with that? What do you think, Joe?
As long as I can see my lawnmower to step onto the trails. Because you can't lift a lawnmower four feet up in a year, riding will weigh fifty hundred pounds. You know what I'm saying? More as I do.
Joe, I know you, Joe, I know you, it'll start with the lawnmower, it'll end up with a boat or something, I'm gonna be kidding you. I know you, I'm just saying, we really have to be respectful of the concerns of the butters, and I think one of the ways to do that, to mitigate it, that, Joe, is just. Just say.
I, I, I agree to that.
You'll agree to that?
Good.
But it'll take me a while to find a truck, and a truck to be able to move in, because that ground is pretty tough.
Okay, so let's, so let's, let's agree to this then, we are going to say that Joe will move. The three trailers that are currently on lot. The three trailers that are currently on lot. What is it?
I mean, who else? I mean.
No.
No.
He doesn't have to have site plan review, if he, if those trailers are roadworthy enough to move from that lot forty four. To lot fifty one. And those things are considered. And then all considered storage are considered equipment. And that that doesn't need site plan and review.
And the trailers coming, move the trails anywhere else property. With the long, the natural, they don't need any setbacks.
It's just like someone. Some other person heaven in the west, like just one too busy having a trailer and they move wherever they want.
The reason why I'm fighting now because half my mother was value with them on trailer, as well as my own tools that I have inside of it.
Yeah, I don't care what you're gonna enjoy, no, Carol, did you want me to comment?
No, I just wanted to know, do we need to be concerned about um, the the driveway access letter that we got?
Do you, no, I'm not concerned about DOT at all.
I went to DOT today.
DOT wants to, if DOT wants to have an issue with how Joe accesses his property, what he does, the DOT can have that, that's not for this board to care about. Same thing we tell. Um, developers when they come in and and the. People that are in there say, well, we didn't meet our, they don't meet the conditions, well, that's up, that's between them. That's between Joe and the hands of DOT. I mean, I think if if Joe's willing to move those three trailers and the one that's split the hairs, they put all on lot fifty one. And be as well to make sure that nothing is stored outside of them. And if you could give us a timeframe, I would like a timeframe in which you think you could accomplish this. You know, so we can say, I mean, we can't leave it open ended. Just give us a timeframe that you think you can accomplish this, a month, two months, weeks, whatever you think.
Months because the ground is soft, it, oh, hey, I mean, oh, but.
So we'll give you two, two months, is that it?
Take three.
Three?
Three, four.
Um.
No, I want. Juneish.
Or April, May, June.
So yeah, the middle, he drives out, so June, July. Let's get until July's.
The, the, definitely, you're agreeing with just July first.
So let's get until July first. Are you in agreement with that, Joe?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, great.
So, so if this, isn't even gonna come before the planning board? Um.
Doesn't have to.
Then there's no conditions related to. Storing um, lawnmowers and boats and.
I see what you're saying.
Could go into the trailer anyway.
I think that if if we. If it's in minutes, if it's recorded in minutes. Um, or or does this board want to have Joe sign something that says he agrees to it? Would you feel better that way?
I I think there needs to be something in the property file for lot fifty one. That that's signed by the planning board, planning board chairman and the and owner. Um, that that that's, you know. There's so many records in town, to go back and, you know, ten years from now, no one's gonna remember what was said at what meeting, and if we just agree to it here. It'll never be known. If someone signed and put in his property file, that's fineable enforcement.
So Carol, can you?
I agree with, I'm gonna agree with OJ. Because in two thousand and three, my father-in-law came for the select board, commission to put them there. Now I go back in town, hard, can't find any records, maybe been in the meeting. And Peter Moore, Pat McKee, and Danny York can't remember anything about it.
So. Carol?
You're gonna write it out, you get something to write.
Can you wrap up something that says what we discussed here tonight? And Joe will sign it, and I will sign it, and it will be put in lot fifty one. That down.
So what is it gonna say?
She'll be all in there.
It says for the best time, and so what it's gonna say is Joe agrees to move.
That trailer.
The the three trailers from lot. Both of the forty seven.
Forty five.
Forty four.
Lot forty four.
For forty four.
Well, Joe will move the three trailers, lots of trailers, lot fifty four, the lot fifty one. And he'll move the one that's currently, you gotta move the one that's on fifty one and fifty two, just put it all, so it's all on fifty one, okay?
No, it's kinda hard, it's only fifty feet wide. And if you boy go all the way across, I can't go around one end to the lot to the other.
So obviously a hundred and eighteen feet. Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
One eighteen south.
That lot.
Lot fifty one says one eighteen foot, is that what it says?
It's one eight, one eighteen, hundred and eighteen.
Feet.
Along who's three, I don't know how deep it is, but it's. This is accurate, it's more than a hundred and eighteen feet.
Watch, look, the length of the trailer, it's a. Bigger than the trailer. Yeah, so Joe. Put all four trailers on lot fifty one, that's what it'll say, Carol. He treats it, move the three, put the other one on lot fifty one, and he agrees that there will be nothing stored outside of those trailers.
Or under.
Well, that's, that's what it says, nothing stored outside of those trailers. And he'll do that, and hang on, Joe, and he'll do that by, he'll do that by July first, what's that?
When I put my lawnmowers pocket on the ground, that's not in the trails on the side, it won't be any, it won't be under it, but there won't be any. My lawnmowers, my other equipment I have, I got.
Wait a minute, now, now you're.
No, but how am I gonna, how am I gonna operate my equipment if I can't, if I can't throw it undercover, I'm gonna be, it won't be undercover, but if you.
We're gonna, if, if we don't do it this way, we're gonna have to go to site plan and review, and then it's gonna. More than likely, probably require, I would think, some sort of screening, you know, so you couldn't see any of that, so if it. If you don't have anything stored outside of it, you won't need any screening. And, you know, the the abutters won't have to look at it, anything, or that there'll be nothing for them, you know, should be nothing for them to have to visualize. I would think that would be the better way to go and into your lawnmowers and stuff you gotta get, you have other properties, should be able to.
I can park them with the trails out. That's a business commercial zone.
Park them where?
Where the trails are gonna be moved from, I can park them right there. There's no law saying they can't, they're movable, they're running in the road all the time.
You probably could park them, park them. But they, you know.
That's true. No, I'm saying. I don't, I can't work, I don't have my equipment.
I, Joe, I I I hear you, but you gotta, gotta be respectful of your abutters too, right? You know, so.
You mean like when your buddy came before me? And wanted to allow, not allow students to have a real estate office and, you know, empty rooms at a mother's house?
Let's stick with, let's stick with the trails and stuff, so I'm gonna look at the board and ask the board what they think. Are you okay with that?
I am good with that.
Steve, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
I'll go along with July first.
July first. Carol, you get the language?
I believe so, I'm gonna draft it and I'm gonna run it by. Someone.
Awesome. Well, that made.
So, so we're saying right now that we're waving.
We're waving site plan review as long as he can move those trailers. And he can put all four trailers on lot fifty one, and he, and he agrees to not store anything.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Hang on. I haven't got there yet. I'm sorry, but I just wanna make sure that you've got the language and then we'll, then we'll, I'll open it up.
What you just said before.
Yeah. Goodness, for reminding me.
Lot fifty one and be lot fifty two. With four trailers wide, that's gonna be ten, twenty, thirty, forty feet wide, it's only sixty feet deep there.
So if I take a look at this map. And I see.
What you're not showing you.
It's, it it's the one that has fifty one on it, and if I take a look at it and I'm looking at the existing box trailer that's there now. I think you could put a lot of those on lot fifty one.
So you're able to get around.
So you, I mean, you know, when you look at it, there's, there's a lot of room there.
Have to get around and get the other side, where this mother's equipment is still there.
You'll, you'll be able to get in there, Joe. I have.
You haven't seen the mud out there, have you?
By July, there won't be any.
You want to bet?
Well, that's all.
I hope not too, but there's four feet of sod as there.
You've covered there for a lot of years, Joe, I'm sure there's a problem.
I had eight feet of sod as there, I hadn't touched off.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Joe, you guys. Five hundred year. It's a five hundred year floodplain.
That's the five hundred year.
Yes, it is. I, I, I put on a layer for.
I don't know what it was.
Yeah, I put on a layer for floodplain, and there is no hundred year floodplain, that's the five hundred year.
All right.
So, is there any other questions from the board? I'll understand most to open up to the public.
I'll make the motion to open up public hearing for this now.
All right. I have a moment, I second.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public here like to comment on what we said here, nine o'clock, Joe?
Um, I believe John and Diane Donovan are on Zoom. Um, I had, uh.
You silenced them, yeah?
Silenced them, but um, I'm hoping I can.
How you open, no, no, not that one, go up, go up.
So.
Go up.
Up.
That's.
There you go, there you go.
Down one bit.
Okay, so I guess you're not muted.
There you go.
John, Diane, are you available and have you been listening?
We're available, we've been waiting patiently.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're open and public comment, listen to your comments if you'd like this time.
Okay.
So. Lot, if all are moved to lot fifty one. Uh, will they be viewable by the street?
By the road.
By the road.
It depends on where he puts them, but does that matter?
It it matters.
Lot fifty one is not near you from what I can understand, your property.
Okay.
No, I understand.
Yes, thank you, comply with that, don't argue with.
I'm not gonna argue, but I'm not conducting this meeting, I, this is the thing, I, what we're thinking the statement of. Lot fifty one is. Uh, I mean.
Three, one, two, three, brother, no, Steve, no, I mean.
It's, it's a. It's across, um.
Somewhere between Liberty and the highway?
Yes. Between Liberty, between Liberty and Eagle Cliff. Um, it it's about, it's not quite halfway, but it's about there. Your house currently, where the trailers are, your house is currently directly across from where the trailers were, I I took a ride up there this weekend, or last weekend. And I looked at it, and the trailers that are, the three trailers that are currently there are directly across from your house. They will now be moving up substantially uh, towards Eagle, Eagle Cliff Road.
Okay, I I have a question. In the event regarding um. Moving those trailers to lot fifty one, okay? The waiver, okay, regarding the waiver, if he should sell the property. Is that?
I don't want to sell any problems, no, Joe. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, say it again.
Go ahead, Diane.
Okay, I'm saying that, you know, he he's requesting a waiver, okay? However, how does that affect, you know, like in ten or fifteen years, he decides to sell the property? Is that a permanent thing that means that any, anyone can just move a trailer anyplace on the, on those lots? Or that lot fifty one? And then we'll be, we'll be going through the whole thing again. My, my concern is, at first was, it's a slippery uh.
Slope.
Slope. And, you know, if you, if you allow. Someone to do that. Then it just becomes a problematic issue, okay? Because we, we've owned the property since nineteen eighty five. And it, my son and my daughter-in-law and grandson will inherit that property. And that's what I'm concerned about, you know, doing a waiver that he wants it permanently, okay? Because he's had ample time, you know, to be able to move that. Um, and. You know, he has other property that he could store these items too.
Where? So. Diane, are you finished, Matt? Are you finished with your comment?
I'm finished with the, with that portion, yes.
Okay, John, do you have any comment? Is it, is there any more comments?
No, I think, I think I'm. Understanding and. It's at least moving in the right direction.
It it's a, it's a good be- beginning.
Okay.
Delayed, I tell, excuse me, what I'm gonna say.
Oh, uh, uh, I'm in public comment, and I wanna hear from the public first.
Okay.
And we can address them, we'll address their, their concerns after, once we hear everybody's. Anyone else in the audience, on your public comment on. This consideration. I think both are abutters, so.
I've never had a problem with how Joe has stored his items, I've lived next to him for thirty eight years. Never been a major problem for me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right. If you could just come up to the.
Yeah.
See that microphone right there? If you could just turn it on and just say what you said, because sometimes. The minute they hear, yes. Please.
Uh, to pick it up.
Just state your name. Just state your name and, and we're there for the record when I do in a minute.
I'm Emily Noel, I've lived next to Joe for thirty eight years, I've never had a major issue with having stored. His items for. I mean, the trailer that's about my property is behind trees and things, so that has never been an issue for me.
Okay, thank you. Dave, did you wanna make a comment?
So. First of all, let, thank you to the board. It is, it's, or the Camp David rental LLC. Um. I think the. Solution he came up with. Certainly, you know, I I'm all for. You know, I've had just these comments on the uh, rental website for my property. And a lot of the cat, they love the river out back, but. You know, looking across the street, they made comments of. You know, rundown and un. Unattractive, that's the exact word, but, you know, that's the kind of people rent up here, a lot of them. Do it because of the comments, you know, from previous rents. Not all of them ended up in print. A lot of them, they just tell me that they're coming in and out of the driveway. And I don't have a answer for it. You know, look directly across the street that, um. So I think you guys can come up with the equitable solution. And um. Yeah, for the business season comes in, like, July first is. Right there where things really start picking up. As long as, you know, my guests, I have to steer across the street, that that would be wonderful.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
So you said he was unattractive.
Um, Joe, you want to do, like I said, I was gonna, actually, before we do that, uh. Post public comment, if if, does anyone else have, any more comments they wanna make? Yes.
Well, should we close public?
I have a moment, I second, by OJ, second by Mike, all in favor?
I.
All right, can you post? They want to hear your comments.
They want to say, the answer to John and Diane. If I just crease the property dramatically, I have to come, I'm gonna come back with site plan review, but please, site plan is laid out. Say, say what you say now. Hopefully, the summer was failed to be gone. Christopher, I said, no, no lot, we're talking about. That doesn't belong to me or my mother-in-law. It belongs to somebody in the garage in town, you can't do it right now because he has a bad attack. Yeah, no, so really, wait up.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Joe, you're, you're gonna bring it, Carol, can I check this?
Yeah.
Bring it up. And you're gonna move those trailers.
I'm also gonna see about putting gate across it, then we're gonna give it in private. Along with the trail, I guess the gate coming in for back of my house also. Do you know, J, know what's going on?
Carol, do you have any questions about which gonna drop for the grant?
Um, no, but I'm assuming that he's gonna sign it and you as chair of the planning board are gonna sign it, is that the only?
Suggest it, I have no problem with that. OJ, the question I have for you is, do you think that this will. Satisfy the requirements of the litigation?
It it will, it leaves it in the hands of the planning board.
All right.
Um, you know, the board of selection has preferred storage containers as opposed to. Semi-trailers. Um, we prefer site plan review as opposed to just a written little agreement. Um, that would outline any, uh, like I said, fencing, skirting. Yeah, landscaping, whatever. Um, but technically, the way that you agreement is re- writ- uh, written, it's up to the planning board. So if the planning board says he doesn't need site plan review, and he, he's gonna sign this piece of paper. That's the decision of the planning board that meets the legal requirements of the week.
All right, I mean, I think not storing stuff on run will take care of a lot of the.
And now.
You know, screening and stuff like that. That will be an agreement.
Can I, um, can I just add something to this? If he if he does what he, you know, what what is planned here, okay? Well, he put up some nice landscaping, you know, um. And.
Right. Go ahead.
You know, because he's he's done that. Last year, he put up a few, you know, mums and things. And just something to kind of, you know, soften the appearance a little better, that what's there now.
Diane, if if he's. Lives up to the agreement that we made with him, there will be nothing stored outside of those trailers on lot fifty-five.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, yeah. Okay.
So that, you know, they're they're not only gonna move from across the street, I mean, they're gonna move. Up towards the interstate.
Right.
It it will be installed up there. They will not, there will not be anything stored outside of those trailers.
All right. As long as it's, as long as it's, you know, looks better than than it has been.
It it should look a lot better over there. So I want to make a motion to this so we can.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, the agreement that we just made. There's nothing else, but yeah.
To be specifically said to move to the three trailers to lot fifty-one.
To move, to move the three trailers that are on forty-four, to move it to lot fifty-one.
And move the one.
Move the one between fifty-one and fifty-two.
Four to be on lot fifty-one.
And that's. No, and no outside, uh, storage of any kind around the trail areas.
Alright, so that's most. And to be completed by.
And to be completed by July first.
I have a motion, one second. Steven, those are the seconds. All of the favors, five percent, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Ten years.
Is that?
The ten years.
They've been there twenty-three years.
No, 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 I'm talking about with the litigation.
No.
Are you signed then?
Okay. Another case coming up, Charlie.
We now have.
Okay, we're done. There we goes. But he doesn't know, is that?
Carol, you know.
He is.
It's topped off, I think.
At the top corner.
Get to the uptown. Click on the thing.
Alright. So now we go to training often for planning board members. Carol, this. Sorry.
I make a motion that we move forward to the other side of that set, um.
Oh, you wanna go to the master plan?
Master plan, yes.
Okay. So go to discussion on the two thousand sixteen master plan, reveal what plans we want to do, update the master plan. Everyone has their copies of the master plan. Did anyone take a look at any of the? Uh, actually, first of all, before we get to that, um, in the interest of same. Next time.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to propose. That we. Do a request for proposal. To update the master plan. And to send it, um, to. To North Country Council as well as any other vendors that they want. Carol sent us a list. And they were. It was. So we would do. We would do North Country Council. We would bring two boards and king. Carol, you sit on there, um, the people that did it last year.
Well, it was two thousand sixteen, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Karen Fitzgerald.
We have to go this year.
You're right, Joe. And and who was that?
That was Karen Fitzgerald. I don't think she does them anymore. I just put her down because I wanted you to remember who she was. She was associated with Jeffrey Taylor before. Um, she was associated with Jeffrey Taylor before.
So.
And that's who did it before.
Two boards and king. We have North Country Council. Uh, who is OCMA? The CMA.
Yes.
Has have anything in there? I didn't look at it. I'm sorry, I didn't look at their their binder that they sent us. Did they have anything in there that said that it was? Uh, that they did.
You asked them or they volunteered that information?
They said that they did master plan updates? Okay. So we'll send it to CMA. I think three would be enough.
Yeah.
Well, except. Uh, Stephen Whitman was the other person that was associated with Jeffrey Taylor. That was the, um, they're the ones who are. Who advertised that as opposed to doing it with a thousand other things. That's what they specialize.
Okay, so let's send it out to Dr. Stephen Whitman as well from the Brazilians Planning and Design LLC. So we we have four and and we'll send out a request for proposal, uh, once we. Once we get the, um. Go through this master plan, as OJ requested, that we just go through it and and make comments about it. It'll take us a little while to get through it because it's pretty lengthy, but if we can do it a little bit at a time, um. I'm not sure. How these companies, uh, charge to do something like a master plan. If they they do it by the hour, it's done as a project, is done. I'm trying to figure out whether or not we. How we do this. So do we go through the whole process and then? Put it up for RFP or? You're on.
Yeah, it's on you. Okay, Bert. Uh, I think. I'm not quite sure, uh, but I believe we generally would do, say, okay. Twenty-five, whatever whatever number it is. And then we would, you know, internally, we'd say, okay, that's enough hours, that's enough time, like, we can get it done in X, Y, Z budget, and then we present that to you.
So it's a bid price, what you're saying?
I believe so, yeah.
So now, let me ask you in regards to North Country Council and the town of Lincoln being a member. Does the town of Lincoln get some prorated?
I'm not sure about prorate, but I was thinking, um, so I oversee all our transportation funding and our transportation contract. So even if you. I don't know, excuse me. Um, as part of that contract, you have some line items in there that puts money aside to assist town with. Transportation-related parts of master plans. So theoretically, even if you went someone else or did it in house, whatever you did. You could call on us to help update the transportation chapter or any kind of related chapter. Um, you know, you know, I would put in, you know, two, three days of work, whatever it might be, to help you with that. Outline the chapter, update it, things like that. That's us.
Are there any other sections other than a transportation section that North Country Council could assist in? As far as that, being part of North Country Council.
I think just just thinking of of this is that, you know, specifically transportation, but I could. Assist probably in other things as well, providing data, but I can't. I don't believe so. We don't have, we don't have like the flexibility and and other.
I'm just asking. I'm not gonna get you to admit.
No, yeah, I I don't think we've got the same flexibility to do that, so, um, but I can, we can always, I can always help with my director.
About the train. Yeah, if you could check on that, that would certainly help.
Yeah, see if there's anything else. Yeah.
So. Carol, do you feel? We wouldn't put this out, we wouldn't put the RFP out right away. I think we probably would put it out once we're. Halfway through the review of the project. I mean, halfway through maybe the the master plan, see how it goes. Because if we get stumped on some sections and we need assistance, we might just say, okay, we're gonna pass this section, and when we get whoever. Whoever we're gonna choose is gonna help us out, get through that, hopefully be able to get through that section, so. Does that make sense?
If if we go through a section and make. Changes.
But we get to that. That's what I'm saying. We get to a section and say, you know, we need a lot more help on this section than that we can. Logistically provide with our limited knowledge, somebody, you know what I mean?
Okay, so we're only gonna look, uh. I'm not sure I understand. If you're saying we won't make, if we don't make any changes to a specific section, just leave it the same.
Right, I mean, it's great.
But if we should make any changes, we will ask for help with that.
Like some of these things, some of these sections, they will, uh. Public service, transportation, um. Housing and neighborhood, some of that stuff, we don't have. We don't have detailed data on. Current current data. So we would have to rely on whoever we hire to assist us to be able to get current data on, for example, housing. What the current status is of what 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 people are paying these days, you know, those type of statistics. And and what what we're charged, what's being paid in Lincoln current, well, we don't have, I I don't need that.
No, I I just. I'm wondering on the the other side of that, what what chapters would we not want, what need help with? I mean, when we did this last time. She sat at this table with us and we went through each chapter, section by section, um, and and. You know, mostly she asked questions. And then we would discuss, you know, our vision. The problems, land use. We would, you know, she would create, she would create discussion and take notes and then go back and and rewrite sections. Well, it needs data, but it also needs discussion. It needs input from from up. It also needs input from the public.
That was my, that was my question.
They would run the, um.
So they organize, I wasn't here for the first one.
She she set up and ran. I mean, there was a lot of.
Was a lot of, uh, data input. Um, we had surveys and I had survey boxes all over town and, you know, we. Came up with the questions that we wanted to ask and what we wanted to emphasize in our questionnaire. And then. She massaged the questionnaire, um, to make it. You know, based on her knowledge about. What kind of questionnaires people respond to quickly and how big it should be and all that sort of thing. And then we did the data inputting and then she gave us a rundown on what the responses were and then we responded. By focusing on, you know, a chapter about traffic, parking, or, you know, the more trouble areas.
So how do we, so how do you put up? A request for proposal? It sounds to me like maybe what Nick says is that what they do is they. These companies, engineering companies, or the people who work, do master plan work, they give you a bid price. To sit down and go through the whole process with you. So it's not just like an hourly rate or a task rate. It's it's a.
Right.
Wrong.
It comes from us.
It's it's a good price.
Comes from us in our community. You know, it, I mean, it's, it's a lot of data gathering.
Use our data together.
Well, I I know they use our data, but that they're the ones that have to find out. Our data as it pertains to what people make, median income, where they live, what they're getting for housing, how long they travel each day. I mean, some of it's available anyway, but.
Current data. Well, they do that too.
Okay. And that's what I'm saying.
It's a big process. It's like this.
Right.
So, you know, the the, all the data that you're talking about comes from the census and. You know, o- other market analysis that they have access to. I mean, there's a lot of sources of information that go into this report.
So so then I guess my question would be. Are we happy with the format? Of this master plan enough that we could? Be able to send it to those four contractors, I'll call them, and say, we would like to be able, as a part of our. Peak, get proposals to be able to help us update our master plan. Using the format that we currently have. I mean, is that? Chime in here, Nick, if I mean, if you have comments, because I'm.
I think it might be, it it could be two separate things, because you could do a limited update that might be. All data focused, or it could be like throwing out a new survey and then updating on your census data and some things like that. Or it could be start to finish, you know. Brand-new gold, brand-new objectives, you know. Kind of start to finish. It might look chapter-wise similar, but that would be a much more comprehensive, like.
Well, see, I think we need to take a look at what we did in two thousand sixteen. See what kind of progress we made, if anything, on us. And then take a look at the. The data section. But then also take a look at. Again, we've got this. Big project that Loon's planning on doing, uh, by Pat twenty thirty, that's another. Five hundred acres or thereabouts, I guess, of Ruski Ustream that could have really affected town. So I mean, I think we need to take a look at. How that, how bigger projects or bigger developments could affect the town, yeah.
I think, I think especially having, I've I've done master planning before for, uh, I was at Montana for a bit with diversity. Um, takes a lot, and it it really is, I think, really importantly is goals and objectives of. You know, looking back at your current plan is really vital to see where you were. And where you wanted to be and are you, you know, are you there? Are you different? Do you, you know, especially like you said, with that, you quit that large development on the horizon. You might really want to plan for. You know, traffic influx of people, you know, felt new developments, things like that. That might be super important.
I mean, and and I couldn't agree more. And I think that if we take a look at two thousand sixteen and see. If, for example. Town Lincoln has fallen way short of what they, where they projected they were gonna be. Try and figure out why. And, you know, because obviously it was important back then. If it if it's still important today, then we need to figure out why. We weren't able to make progress in ten years.
Yeah.
You know, so. Go ahead.
Look, from a planning board member's perspective, I think the the data section is. Really easy for us, you know. Because they, whoever they is. Do all the data stuff, you know, census, traffic, all all, you know, median incomes. They just provide us with that data. But I think it's the.
Can I make that special point one?
Yeah.
So so for witness. Out to bid. And say they gotta do a traffic study, or say they gotta do some other study. That is that all rolled into the base price or are there, do you have to? You know, when you're when you're looking at the data, do you have to limit the amount of applying the data? So that you know what the price is gonna be, you know what I'm saying? Obviously, you have to let whoever that is know what kind of data you're looking for, you know what I'm saying? That's why, that's why I was asking, like, everyone's happy with this, this is the data we're looking for, you know what I mean?
I think the the data, correct me if I'm wrong, the types of data that are in these master plans are are, I don't wanna say standard, but but it's all similar.
So, uh, yes, so I would say that, you know, any contractor, like, if if. We got, you know, got the contract to do it, we wouldn't be going out and doing, say, the traffic counts, you know. We we wouldn't go out and do the traffic counts that we're gonna do this season. We wouldn't kind of. We would use current data, so we check census, we check American Community Survey, we check. All the traffic counts, state counts, you know, we we would do things like that, the checking. Housing, community development, you know, transportation, all those things. We wouldn't, we. Most likely would not go out to kind of do a pilot data collection problem.
And and where do you get that data from?
Um, so like I said, so.
Sources.
So the transportation, that comes from DOT. So there's that online data portal. That you can basically download all traffic counts that are in your community. You can pull the data as like an Excel spreadsheet, so it's easily turned into charts, graphs, stuff like that. Um. There's housing data that I think is from Department of Housing. Yeah, you know, he, you know, we can try and find it that way. There's also the census, of course. Um, has a lot of the baseline demographics and like, like OJ said, is the, you know, median income, that type of stuff. Is all pullable. You can get a big data set and have that and able to, you know, draft that.
I'll get you to go to, I just wanna go a little further on that side. So do you have? Comparative analysis on. Towns like Lincoln that are experiencing huge growth? And 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 are you able to extrapolate that data, you know, compared to where we're at and and things like that?
I would say probably as part of the request or as, you know, if. You could probably include that as part of the request of, you know, hey, in this document, we would like. To, you know, have you look at maybe what other, you know, mountain towns, recreation hubs you're doing. And see if. Uh, but that would kind of be wrapped up into that as an extra. Uh, I know. Uh, I know personally in my transportation work, I've done a lot of that for transit service. What rural transit service looks like, so it's a lot of like towns out in the Rockies that are very similar to Lincoln. And Woodstock, um and how they kind of deal with. Forest traffic, local transportation, stuff like that.
Anyway, as for the members of a board. The data stuff is easy because. He's gonna do it, he has all the resources and connections and knows where to find all this stuff. The more difficult part is is. When you need someone sitting here to guide us to like. What is the vision? For the town? What what are the uh objectives with, or what are the problems and then objectives for? Land use. Or transportation or? Anything else?
Through, do we, did the town do that, grew? Having meetings with locals and it was all that kind of.
If if it was multiple stages of it, one was, there was some some, um, there was a survey that Carol talked about, okay, which is.
We also were open for two or three days.
In here.
In here and people were coming in and they were chatting with us like. You know, I can't stand coming here on the weekend, I, you know, I'm I'm prisoner in my house.
The weekends, could we? Conduct something like the. Correct me here, but. Remember when on the forest.
Service came in and did that?
Yeah, like an open house? Was that what it was, it was?
It was, yeah, it was basically an open house information center, a session and they have, you know, uh. Whatever, biologists here and a a land use guy here and the. Ski recreation guy there, I mean, there was six different things around here. I I see it similar in um.
Chief of Police and Board of Selectmen and a planner and, you know. Some planning board members and the town manager.
The 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 master, what can we get to do this needs to be here. Talk and connect and put things in. But I mean, that was one part, the survey was one part, and then sitting through and like going through each chapter with this board was very. I mean, we would. And we generally did one chapter. But tried to do one chapter per meeting and sometimes we didn't even get through it. But they would sit at our table. Would all discuss it, they would take notes and then come back with a draft form. And then we would look at the draft, make questions, comments, changes, and then do the next chapter with them. And that's how the whole process went and I I assume that's really.
I think, yeah, no, that's. In in my previous experience, that's more or less how it went is. We had surveys or interviews with. Like, like you mentioned, the county officials, you know, county, whatever have you. And then kind of one chapter a month or one every couple of months to review it slowly.
Well, they also, um, the process that, um, when I talked to Ray Corver about was the Plan New Hampshire. And that's more like a charrette, you know, that's, it's also kind of a good way to start the process off like. Um, getting. Professionals to come and help you all in one day. You know, so you invite the community to come and, you know, they talk about. Vision of their vision of the community and the sort of thing, you know, it's kind of like a good kickoff. Um, I've only been to two charrettes, um, and that was years ago. Uh, but it was very instructive, I was one in Franconia, I think, or Sherill. Um, when they did one, when they were trying to decide. Um, what direction they wanted to go in. And they had some planners there, some transportation people there. Um, so they had a bunch of different. Uh, professionals who vol- most of them volunteered their time to be part of that charrette. So. It's just another way of looking at the problem. Like so like a kickoff, like starting it in one day. And then, you know, going from there. Getting good feedback in that charrette. Context and then. Trying to. Look at. Hammering out of master plan.
So we need. We need to be able to get some sort of a. Ballpark. Estimate of cost. So that we can see. If we have enough money to start something like this, and we do have money in our CIP. But then how much it's gonna be totally so we can. Continue to either appropriate money or. Do the CIP process. Guys. Until we know whereabouts we're we're landing, we're kind of treading on here, that stuff. How we do that, so. We would need to be able to have, I would think, an RFP first, maybe, that that says. Update our. Did you need help to be able to put an RFP together to do that? Can North County Council help you put an RFP together? I'm just asking, I mean, look, it 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 sounds like it's. I've been a part of it before, but it it was quite a while ago. All that, I think before this one, but.
We must have done an RFP back in two thousand fifteen. And we hired, um, originally went with, like I said, Jeffrey Taylor.
Could you take a look and see if you could find that and maybe give us a coffee to the board? And we can take a look at it and if we feel comfortable making changes, we could do it ourselves and if not, we could see if we could get some help to do it. Does that sound? Sounds reasonable.
There's a lot of stuff in the book. Doesn't have to be rewritten, there's enough to read the whole book. A lot of stuff still present in current. But you don't have to do the whole thing, but you just pick out what we need to do. Like you suggested last time.
Does that sound like a?
That's, that's actually the way. I usually have preferred to do it is. You know. Take, you're you're bringing everything forward that's helpful, you leave the rest and you kind of fill in the blanks and. Like I said, you know, do the goals still fit, does the, you know. Does the, is the input still valid, you know, does it all still work and, yeah, that makes sense. A lot of it could still work once in time, so.
It makes sense. So Carol, will you see if you can find that and get it to us? And we can submit. Questions we have prior to our next meeting, if not, we can, you know, we'll we'll discuss it as well, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Carol, I assume that if you cannot find the ones in twenty. Fifteen. That that. Some of the town of the state that would have one that would.
Yeah.
No, I think, I I think. Uh, I I downloaded a couple of them and.
Okay.
I think Karina has two.
And, yeah, you can always check with New Hampshire Municipal Association, right, most likely have a template or something like that, so. They're almost two now.
Does anyone else have any like comments or do you want to go through any of this or you wanna wait?
I think it'd be. Best to get a RFP out soon, get someone, get it.
Save the money and see what the stuff.
Well, yes, see what what the cost is, um, the timeframe is and get someone on board. Right away, because if you do something like the Plan New Hampshire, Carol, that's a grant, correct? I don't, you know, it's a free service, but you have to get in line to do that.
Well, they allocated um money to provide grants to municipalities to help them update. Land use.
That's a land use, so.
Is the. Is the Plan New Hampshire focused, um. Just more on general master planning or is it ordinance?
I think most. Everything I've read about Planet Hampshire is more big picture. Long term plan. You know, what's the vision for the town? Kind of that's I think is where they really go to.
Okay, I remember we we were looking at. Using Plan New Hampshire for the Campus World Project. Um, it it sounded like it was very helpful, but it also sounded like it was a long term thing like. We didn't have time to. Apply and get answers and do something before. Town meeting. Last year.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I remember it was, it was a. I think I would do so many per year. And and.
Like you said, it's like you get on the list and then, you know. But there's no, there's no real hard best time limit on updating this master plan, they rec- there's a recommendation. That it's done within, I think, what is it, ten years? Yeah, that's only a recommendation and I don't think that is hard fast from what I've read.
It's supposed to be ten years.
Ten years, it's supposed to be between five and ten years.
This document, that's the RSA, if you look at the RSA, it doesn't say that it's hard and fast. But I, I went through it and I was looking at it and I said, wow, so we do have, we could do this more than a. You know, as long as they can drag it out five years.
I I mean, I, you're almost gonna go to jail because we didn't do it by twenty sixteen.
Right.
However, I just, my 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 point was that if we're gonna try to use Plan NH. As a kickoff. We should start this process like today. With the RFPs out, you view the RFPs to someone. Sign up for the Plan New Hampshire, see if that even fits in with any, um, anyone's, um, timeframe. And then make decisions from there.
That's what we pretty much said.
Uh, just quick. I didn't go through all of it, but I did go through a number of categories through here. Conceptually and categorically, they all still seem to have very strong relevance right now, even though it's ten years old. Um, so I don't think, hopefully, we don't have to do this three mile of work per se or. But it it looks pretty good for just some of the things that I went through. But I'm sure. You know, we could buff it up a little bit.
Well, we changed our zoning last year too, and that was kind of a big deal.
I mean, there's a lot of things coming. That, you know, and and one of the things that. Carol put in your package was. The legislators changing. Some of the zoning ordinances.
Yeah.
And that could have a big effect on. Um, top landing boards. So, you know, and and the ability to change things. I think moves everybody to get a hold of their legislator first and tell them that. We like to keep our control locally. Personally. Yeah, well. That's what you get legislators for, you're supposed to be able to go through them, anyway. Um, so. As a kickoff point, Carol, you'll 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 keep fine, send it to us. And we'll wait to discuss any more of it, we can stay. It it doesn't hurt you to kind of, like Mike said, go through it, look at it, so that you at least have some questions. When. Where we choose starts off. And then, thank you for staying around. Yeah, it'll be a lot of fun for you.
You got it, yeah, just seven blocks.
Okay. Training options for planning board members, Carol has put down.
Oh. This is what I think we need to do, are you ready? I think that we should. Uh, you know, I've got money for training and we haven't. You know, each year we're not really doing a lot of training. But I think part of it is, you know, as we get older, a little more lucked into like go over the mountain, at least in Ohio. So. We, for five hundred and fifty dollars, I could get Stephen Buckley to come here and do a training. And then we could invite like Woodstock and other communities uh nearby. We've done this before. I I've done it, I don't know, four or five times since I've been here. Uh, but it's been a while, so you know, definitely nothing since COVID, so. Um, and that way, you know, we could get all of us to come. We could get the ZVA to come over, you know, to come over. And I think it would be well worth the money and it's probably cheaper than. Me paying out of my budget for each person to go individually to a. Training and having, anyway.
I think that'd be a great idea.
So I think we should do that.
I I I think it'd be, I I think that's a great idea, Carol, I applaud you looking at that and. And we just wanna make sure that it's dirt, so that we're coming up to the summer, everybody starts disappearing. You know, so, um, when would you suggest, when would might be a good time to?
Late, probably May. Because. But I don't, of course, you guys don't have your major tools on opening elementary school or high school, but. So am I.
Don't make it late, maybe because.
Well, we'll see if we can have somebody come in six, like. Like a regular meeting.
Okay. Yeah, if you can make it, I I would think. Early May would be better.
About the last meeting in April or the first meeting in May?
I want the first meeting in May.
Oh, okay, well, the last one in April isn't good.
Usually we have.
Trying to give you some more time.
I, and here, Carol?
Listen, usually we have a snowstorm the last week in April. Cause my birthday's in that week.
Hang on, Charles. You gotta get ready, we have. Um, a few more things that. Okay, let me go. Yeah, a few more things, I got four finals coming up, okay.
Um, I'm gonna go, it's blizzard being, oh, this is my daughter.
I came back to drive her. I have great parents. Sorry to steal her away from you gentlemen.
So, Carol, would you make the?
I'm just gonna. In the April, the end of April.
May fourteen. And Jay? Can you stay on? As Carol's leaving?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, yeah, no problem, can I just uh actually say something to you guys really quick? Uh, if you guys do decide to look into the Plan New Hampshire or kind of go that route. I was heavily involved in the one that we did in Camden before I left the town of Camden, so I have. You know, pretty good knowledge and experience, so I just wanted to let you guys know if that's a route that we go, I've kind of gone through one.
All right, thank you.
Gotta shut down. Have a good night.
Okay, so we've got the training office done, um. We have. Administration Review, Carol's not here, so we might wanna step over some of these.
Do you wanna look at the the checklist?
Carol, put in our packets, updated checklist. Um, the, the changes that were made. On page three. Were in yellow. Eight areas subject to double hell. Yes, subdivision requirements. I'll get it highlighted.
It's in the package towards the end. It had the tunnel linking lower.
What's that one you got right there?
To your left.
There you go. There, thank you. All right, everyone. Yeah, okay. Well, second page, third page. Um, number three and four are changed. Areas subject to Shoreline Protection Act, the lines of various setbacks and shoreland protection. And then four areas of special. Flood hazard with case flood elevation lines and buildings in relation to special flood hazard areas. These must be ones that Carol wanted to include in here, because I don't remember discussing any planning board review.
I don't remember discussing those.
Size, I I think we probably should wait. Size, I I think we probably should wait a tick.
Well, this this one we did change because the the new district, everyone needs downtown, but as G U D. Versus general use room three, which is G U three. So that was the change in that.
That was the change, so.
So that was, that was fine.
That was fine. The other ones we have question are.
Yeah, I don't know what was changed in those.
Or why. Um. The teacher proposed law on page four, the teacher proposed law. At frontage for direct access onto a plastic date or a better road for an extra R S A to come before call forty one. So that building permit when handled or land use permit can be legally issued.
That was added because of that one.
Right, yeah.
The discussion came about because of that one law.
Also, um, all easements. Be shown on a plan include land to be dedicated for public use and private use. Including right away easements, utility easements and any other easements impacting or limiting development included current use leans. I don't remember any of that. Discussing any of that.
We can ask you, but that that was, um. Again, that was a discussion we had related to a South Peak application and I can't remember which one, I think it was one of the subdivisions.
Well, that's Carol.
Okay.
Let me go that way, they were not guessing.
All right.
Last card. Um, page five, the subdivision create slash install or use a domestic water system of any type. I don't understand Jay, but I understand. One.
I'm gonna make sure we don't have to do wells.
The subdivision create slash install or use domestic water system of any type. So I'm assuming that she's putting that in there as a lead in to.
The whole looping.
The whole looping. Because if you, if you say yes. It uses a domestic water system. Then you need to know whether it's the system to be created is looped. Are there any dead ends, which again refers to looping? If yes, subdivision right like five oh one, water system is created by subdivision, so minimize that as. That just tells you that. The other one's saying that. Why would we want A in there?
So that they specifically go look at section five point ten one.
Okay.
And then the next.
But that, should that, should that be part of the application of, yeah?
Well, it leads to the next B and C, which is the two requirements in five ten one, which is to get input from the public. Um, works and the town engineer, get their support and apply to a wave of or select.
Okay. All right.
So it leads them to read that.
It kind of leads them into that things that, so they can't say, we weren't told about this.
Right. They know what the rules are by reading it and they know what the process is by checking off B and C.
This is what I want to do. For your water sewer system, the all requirements of town and Lincoln Water System Regulations with no substitutions, I think that's still important. And then on page. Six. Um, this is just about the paper copies. It's only asked for three large full size paper copies. Um. I know that's all she's asked for, but I mean, is three, is three enough? The only reason I say that is because they bring one, two, three up here. Carol should have one, someone else might be out there, I mean, to me, three seems to be not enough.
You started at five years ago. Keep the board to the audience.
Well, no, I I agree, it's like. Some of the means we've been to, they have three, but then someone else, Carol doesn't have one, or someone else in the audience can see one over there, Sean does, you know. We have them all up here.
We used to have one on board all the time.
This, this is for. The final plaque, if you look at the top of the page, these are the requirements for the final plaque, so, so when they bring in. Copies, um, you know, they should bring in enough of all of us, they change them or whatever, once we approve it. We need three.
I see, I'm correct, I didn't see that.
No, the initial one.
I didn't see anywhere, I mean, it's on where it's at. What you have to apply here.
Okay, you're in like twelve copies.
Um, let me see that, twelve.
Three at the very top.
Twelve. Twelve, twelve copies, twelve number of copies. These copies don't need to be, I'm sick and tired of looking at it through a magnifying glass.
It's, go to the next page, top of the next page. Playing survey.
Well, comes maps, a scale likely smaller than one equals hundred P, which should have the following explanation of that.
All right, so we're good with, we're page six.
Yeah.
And that's the last one, right?
So we only need an explanation on. Uh, page four, page three, page three, page four. Item number, name four on page three and item number T on page four. And I'll check with Carol and. See if we can get that. You want to take a five minute break so everyone wants to. For the room?
What the trail that I looked at? It's one of the old couple of stuff they're packing up. I live in town, if I get the guy to give it to you, you want to put it in just your back foot?
What, one of the trails that are gonna be moved?
Yeah.
No.
It's a regular, it's one of the original fails in the mill, they back ninety three here. For that time frame, packing young.
Not interested.
Okay. I want to get out of the way. Okay, so sorry. You get a V fifty two Mac, through it, the trail in front of it, for sure with. Two strategies like the town back in the forties and fifties.
Well, was there any historic groups that might be interested in it, I don't know, but I would do it that way.
With the company down in the southern part of the state, it has owned our little mansion, maybe that's. Your different that we have, long as Smitty's already show. Never happened now. Which would have been. For the past three months, it's probably it and so forth.
Well, that's something that would be of interest. That would be probably a good idea. See if they want it. It's an original way.
Original, I want, yeah.
Somebody's got.
Someone's brain wants that, the correct side of the stick of a woman. There's any really.
Well, if that showed, this channel would have felt it down and make it some of the funds, so. All right, all right, we're ready back. We'll go to number C, update our parking places from Milton Marketplace. Uh, village shops, Alpine Adventures, Carol's not here, so we don't know if there's been any. Um, updates on that.
Ron, do you know if if there's been, um. Anything done with counting parking spaces at, so. This place or Alpine Pizza or.
Yeah, the counts on the parking spaces. We've done a few ourselves. And we're still walking away doing some. We haven't got any info from anybody else, it's more like, what are we dealing with today? What do we stand, what's there and what's the group saying, what it, what's the tell, so we're trying to extrapolate all that information. Off the street, there's probably a shortfall of eighty, out back here, it could be a shortfall of thirty. Over at the. Uh, still a shop, probably a shortfall of eighty. Uh, I'm not sure about Ripple Walk itself yet. From it, Ripple Walk. Is. But look, wait a minute here, we only asked for. For the. Village shops over here.
Yeah.
And the beach place, new beach place there, all we wanted was to charge accounts for those, I don't know what the rest of that is then. Okay, so. I'll find out, but what, if these guys are, the onus was on them. To give us the information, okay? If they haven't done anything, we don't have it. Okay, so what I'm gonna suggest is that we. Um, send a letter to Progoshen or whoever his person is and tell them that if we don't have it within seven days. That. The planning board is going to recommend. And we're gonna send a letter to the board of select, asking them for a cease and desist. For those things, as as a way of trying to get them to move, because I'm not sitting here just my own. Those guys, you know, we asked them for something, they should be able to respond to it. Say, what are you okay with that?
Yeah.
See, like, Joe, you okay with that? OJ, okay, so we'll do that, that way there. You know, we all sit here till whatever time, you know, and it's. Carol does a lot of work, you do a lot of work and, you know, when you ask for something. It it's not that difficult to get it, no, certainly not. I mean, you you've done all the work by sounds for a lot of this other stuff, but. So, so we'll do that, I'll I'll make sure and tell Carol, we're just trying to get a handle, overall picture, what's what's the real root of the problem there? What do we gotta go over there? It's compounded by the small ones, of course, but what you're looking for. But as a whole, what's really going on here is what we're trying to achieve. Well.
That's perfectly good.
We've got some nation for that, yeah, all right, thank you, um. Discussion already administered process for TRT team, I'm gonna suggest that we leave that, or Carol, there, we can discuss that. Um, and that, and that line of. We have, I don't know if anyone's aware or not, but we have signed a agreement with DuBois and King. DuBois and King to be the. Second engineer for the Town Lincoln or the other engineer for the Town Lincoln. Um, and. And they're, and they'll be starting directly, we're gonna be. With the TRT committee. Um, so that they can get their foot in the door and. Not, have a, have a meeting together, see what's. They can all talk about it. OJ has something he wants to talk about. Jack and the, right?
Yep. Um. Yes, I guess whatever, Monday night, the board of selectmen may, I'm sorry, the select board may, but. Pointments, um, for the different selectmen, on the different committees. One of the uh committees that Jack currently serves on is the North Country Council. Um, the housing, and it's the North Country Council.
Board.
Board, okay, um, it's the planning board's job to appoint him to that position, if they want him, what, appoint someone else to that position, but. He's willing to do it, it's just the select board can't make that appointment, needs to come with you.
I'll make a motion, actually, two members in the board.
Say that again?
There are two members in the board, that's me two years ago. One is myself, one is Jack, we're gonna commit, go work on it together. But since COVID things have gone as you.
Although as busy as you are, it's probably better off to have. So I'll make a motion that Jack Daly be appointed to the North Country Council. Steve seconds it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I should like.
Okay. Jackson, so. Oh, yeah. Right now, I'm still in. Did you hear that, Jay? Jay?
Can you, can you repeat that, please?
So I made a motion that Jack Daly be appointed to the North Country Council Board and it was voted in the affirmative, everybody?
I just didn't hear who seconded.
So you?
Steve, no, Steve knows already, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, we had our mics turned off, sorry.
Okay, can you make it, president, I want to take transportation board, the North County Council also. One of the board, one of the transportation. I've been catching those by tune, but not as a person.
All right, so. That's it for the agenda, OJ, do you have any else?
I don't.
Anyone else have any? No, I've done that, all of them.
Make a motion to.
Joe seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That turned you eleven, what we worked, get on. Yeah.
You get any fun stuff this week, Sean?
I don't know, every, every day is something. Something different, you know, that is, actually, my son did, he was related, married by, uh. Married somebody in Berry and he supported her. The other, they got, the other, I mean, there's people, Rob, like, who, who, shut that off.